Afternoon, everybody. We will call to order the commission meeting for April 5th, 2021. This will be meeting number 2021-11. Do we have the Reverend Jerry Maltin here? Not here today. Dr. Fletcher, could you lead us in prayer?
Sure. Well, we know that the green grass fades and the flowers wither, but the word of our Lord stands forever. Dear Lord, Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together after this last holy week and the celebration of Easter. May I ask that you watch over these leaders and these community servants as they conduct business today? That it be in the best interest of the citizens that they serve and in keeping with your commandments. Amen.
Amen. My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's stand as one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here.
Amen.
All right. First up, we have consent agenda with approval of amendments for meeting 2021-10. We have a credit card statement for March. We have approvals and additions and abatements. I don't see who she is.
I am.
All right.
Have a team.
If you want to head on up, that would be great. We also have serial malt beverage license for Dodge City Raceway Park and proclamation for April as child abuse prevention month. Hi, Patty. Can you go over our additions and abatements, please?
Yeah, there's a bunch. Kind of held them so that they can all at once instead of just spreading them out. So we got some 2019 PUP. 2019, it's actually one owner of numerous parcels on the 2019 real estate one. For the 2020, we had a couple of commercial property come in. Did some field reviews, did what we could. They are going on to small claims, but they're getting a fee appraisal done. So maybe that, I don't know, once we get the fee appraisal in on that one, we'll work on that one. The other one was a farmstead, a large farmer come in. We actually got to go into a lot of his buildings, his green bins. Had to go through the whole parcel. Found a lot of things we didn't know from not being able ever to get on there. So that was a large one there. The personal properties, a lot of them are people coming in signing or coming in. We had several coming in, they tagged the wrong weight. And what had changed the weight of their trucks or pickups and et cetera. And a lot of them I'd said were penalties. And one was signed a rendition in March before when they were due. And then he moved, but didn't notify us he moved, and he signed in another county. So he was double assessed. So we talked with the county and it was one or two of the others. So we took ours off the call to state and said, hey, the majority already was last year. So we had to take it off our county, but he's being taxed in the county he moved his business to. He didn't notify, we didn't know. So that was a large one. So yes, there's a lot of large ones, but that's what was going on.
So you say we have one going to planes?
That would be a 2021, really, commercial.
Okay. Do we know when that will?
It hasn't been docketed. They've sent it, we've been notified. They've sent it in, but it hasn't been docketed yet. So if they do play for the docket, they can hold it in a month, it could be six months.
Yeah.
We're hoping in between, we'll get the fee appraisal. We won't have the expense of the small claim. We'll look at it and work out with that, we're hoping.
All right, thank you, Patty. I'm sorry, does anybody else have any questions?
No.
All right. We also have some ladies here for our child abuse prevention month. You guys want to come up?
Sure. So I'm the executive director with the court appointed social advocate program. And this is Indy Emel. She's our volunteer coordinator. And one of the things that we do every year is plant Pinwell gardens across the six counties that we work in. And we also asked the county commissioners to read a child abuse prevention month proclamation. And so we gave that to you guys to read today. And then we were hoping to snap a photo of you guys with Pinwell. And if there's anybody out here that you want to pull in, just I did bring some extra.
All right, I'll go ahead and read this. Child abuse prevention month for 2021 proclamation. Whereas we can build healthier, safer, and thriving communities if we take the same approach to raising families that we do to tending a community garden on a shared piece of land. Whereas children are luckily grown and have a right to be safe and to be provided an opportunity to thrive, learn, and grow. And whereas hope and commitment are powerful fertilizers that strengthen and support Kansas families, thus preventing the far-reaching effects of malt treatment, providing the opportunity for children to develop healthy, trusting family bonds. And whereas we must come together as partners to nurture, heal, and grow together because prevention happens in partnership. And whereas by growing a better tomorrow for all children, together we can ensure that Kansas children will grow to their full potential as the next generation of leaders, helping to secure the future of this state and the nation. Therefore, I, Commissioner Tasset, Ford County, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 2021 as child abuse prevention month.
Anybody else in there?
Bill.
You have those.
We'll have to do a panorama shot.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second it.
Motion and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have approval of claims for payment. I have an amount of $687,839.82.
We have ESG grant pass-throughs. We have senior center allotments. Motorola Spillman contracts came through, that was a big one. Connet for the expo. We have engineering services, fuel, historical supply, pass-through grant, sand, allotment contract.
I would make a motion to approve claims for payment. Motion and seconded. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That brings us to open public comment. We'll limit to five minutes per individual and 15 minutes per topic with final action to be deferred until the next county commission meeting unless an emergency situation deemed exists. Do we have anybody for open public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. Don't have anything for legal counsel here?
Maybe later.
Yeah.
That brings us to county administrators report. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, the first three items would be for Ford County Engineer John Hoppenhaus and Kirk and Michael.
Good afternoon. Warming up out there, nice. Report on active participation items from the preceding month and things that might be coming up here. So Officer Bridge 31, this is the bridge replacement there on 114 Road north of Garnet. Bridge Department is still working on preliminary items to get the right-of-way acquired. Working on landowner contacts. Chris did say he renewed. So if you're doing a federal aid project, you have to take a short course on right-of-way acquisition procedures. Not necessarily part for this project because it's not a federal aid job, but he did, we go ahead and get that renewed. So he has that, so right-of-way acquisition training under his help as well through, actually through LTAP, local technical assistance program. So that'll be going forward. Talking the other day about increases in steel prices. You know, been seeing any reports, the steel has gone up over like 50% since the first of the year. So we're really glad that we bid the beams for this bridge last fall, but the prices were quite a bit lower. We've got to take advantage of the cost difference to put them back. It's not a pretty new one, or hard to get that done. So they're sitting in the yard with the bridge construction. I'm going to skip over the Jewel Road and come back to that. It's on the next agenda item here. Quaker Road Drainage are a little having a new to report there. We did get the survey and it's getting started on the drainage analysis for that project and looking at concepts. Hopefully, when I come back next month, I'll have a little more to report on there. Hence, another higher priorities in the short term before that. Iron Star Wind. We still continue to have our person or liaison on site every day. In his last weekly update, he said that the foundation construction for the wind towers is completed and anticipating that they'll be bringing in the wind tower components themselves starting this week and erecting large cranes this week to get started setting up towers maybe next week. So as the coming, as the weeks progress going forward, people should start to see some towers going up in the air here, starting in April. Graybelt Power, or Graybelt Express, the direct current power line. None of they knew with Ford County on that project. We have heard from some other counties that they're reaching out again to get started on the, I don't know if that gets started, but to restart discussions on their road use maintenance agreements. They got setback about a year for various reasons on their progression. So they're, I'm anticipating sometime later this year, they'll contact Ford County to reinvigorate the discussion on road use agreements. Still looking at this time, early 2022 is what, as far as we know, for start construction. Possibly, or this is the early 2022 to possibly early 2023, completion by the end of 2025. Is what they've shared with us so far. On the discussion of road reclamation projects, Kate, the Jewel Road project, the county was awarded some cost share funds from KDOT. It's a reimbursement program and has construction being completed. KDOT has opened the spring cost share application cycle. Applications are due Friday, April 9th. The next project on the county's list was to reclaim 102 Road from Highway 50, which is out of Howell going north up to Garnet. That's about two miles. We're going to submit that project for cost share funding application or for cost share funding assistance. KDOT recently got some of the federal COVID relief funds. And so they're going to beef up the amount of funding they have in the cost share program this cycle. Last fall, they only had $5 million available. This spring, they're going to have $25 million potentially available. So we hope that our chances are good to get some money there. Still working on getting some letters of support from some local entities. We've got two so far. Trying to get a couple more, turn into those applications to support the project. So like the Howell elevator for one is one of the reach out to try to get a letter. The Crowell sand pit there, people that use 102 Road quite a bit. I'm sure they haul materials up there to the north to get to Garnet and go to other parts of the county, back to Redwood, for instance. So those letters of support are pretty big in the eyes of the application reviewers.
I would imagine there are some local farmers around there that would be plenty interested in improvement of that road, too.
Yeah, certainly so, certainly so. Reached out to, Guyard Diesel that they're located right there on, wanted to provide me a letter. Chief Boyd from Fire DMS provided a letter of support. Tried to reach out to the Howell feeders there as well and ask them to get something. Haven't heard back from some of those folks. I'll be trying to get ahold of them again this week. Saturday, Friday, so the more we can get, the better. Help our chances of getting some money in the Ford County. The new business item I had was we did complete a drainage study for a potential drainage improvement on Iron Road just to the east of 116 Road. The issue going on there is there's a five-by-five, five-foot-by-five-foot concrete box located in this place, but it's silted completely shut over the years. Chris and I actually drove up there this morning to look at it. All you can see is a head wall sticking out of the ground either side of the road. The box is completely full of dirt. So there's no channel for water to flow when they get rain down. This is on Iron Road just to the east of 116 Road. How far east is it, Chris, would you say?
Quarter mile or a mile, is that what that?
It's Grayville Township Road.
So when they get a rain event with water flowing out of the field, it has to go over the road as you get, going from south to north. It's a dirt road, and so as you can imagine, it gets pretty sloppy. So they were asking about, they look at some culprit improvements, but really the crux of the issue is the drainage channel is gone. And it's a whole line is even at the top of the road. So it seemed like the more prudent thing might be to try to clean out the drainage first and try to get that established again to the water goes into the road that's there. Now, that's the conclusion of my county engineer report for this month. If anybody has any questions, we have to entertain those.
How much stuff is silted in there? Do we have any idea how deep that is?
It's at least 550. And it goes, it's, to the south, it's a pasture. And there's pasture on both sides. And all the way back in there, it's level with that. So if we dug five foot there right at the road, you'd have to dig five foot or more.
That's what I was wondering, how far out.
Going out into the fields. Yeah.
It's, sounds like a pretty sizable dredging project.
Yeah, yeah. Lot of dirt there.
So where did the dirt come from? It's pasture on both sides.
Yeah. And unless it come from further south, from a tilled field.
Yeah, so we probably need to do some survey, profile of the stream bed just to see how far up and downstream you'd have to go to dredge it out. There's not a lot of drainage on the road itself. The road more or less is a ditch. Some of it has just come off the road.
Come off the ditch.
Yeah. Double due. It's just dirt, so when it gets wet, it's kind of, and you can tell by the wheel ruts, it gets pretty muddy, but it's going to get soaked in rain on it, dang.
We've got a couple of those.
Yeah. Always some bit of snow and other things, too, that will soak it up. Hey, there's no other questions? If you want to be ten, because you'll lose out on pavement life. You don't want to get them too thick. Get too thick, you'll run out of tons of asphalt before you get to into the road. We don't want that to happen. And for the KDOT specifications for this type of asphalt, we're going to have a person in the, actually at the asphalt plant site running aggregate gradations on their sand and rock to check, they're providing us the material that was specified and bid by the county. So this, this contract is a time and materials contract. It's an 81 working day project. And so a lot of the costs associated with this is dependent on longevity of the project. If the contractor takes the full 80 days, we may end up using the majority of all of the funds that are in this contract that I'm proposing. The contractor can get done sooner and receivably move on around those schemes. So that's something to keep in mind. So you should have a table in here that this is the cost breakdown for Kirk and Michael Services. TerraCon is down here as a, as a subconsultant or we call it out as a direct expense at the bottom. There's a line out there for TerraCon Services. For both consultants combined together, our total cost estimate with a not too seed was $237,986.70.
John, as honest as I can be, this is really a tough bill to take. And, and just trying to talk openly about it, when I went through this and I was just looking at your bill, the time and the hours and the overtime, then there's a multiplier on there of 2.3. It just really ramps up that overall cost of what it looks at for looking at the project and then to come down to the end and then see, you know, TerraCon's an additional $100,000. It's, it's a lot of money for 80 days.
And these, and I'll be upfront, these bills were budgeted in the original cost applications and we turned it into KDOT for the cost share. Of course, on the cost share, KDOT does not participate in engineering design or inspection services. Maybe for a matter of perspective, so the two, the two projects bid together end up being $3.1 million, what we don't, for APAC.
Yeah.
We do a lot of KDOT projects. I know it's not a KDOT project, but when KDOT does projects, they use 15% of construction for a budget, come up with a construction injury budget. So if you took that number just for a budget estimate, that'd be $450,000 plus.
Yeah.
And yes, two, no doubt, $237,000, a lot of money.
Well, in my mind, I'm thinking, at what point does the county just hire their own engineer and have him on staff? I mean, this is a big payroll.
Well, the, there's, there's two, two arguments for that on our side. One is that when the project's done, we're gone. You're not paying the person, and this project's 80 days, so that's about four months. And then we're done. And you're not first, you're not paying all these people for the other eight months out of the year. That this project's not happening. The other part is there's certain tools on the trade that we're going to be utilizing, the nuclear density meter. This costs tens of thousands of dollars. Requires federal regulatory permission to have one of the devices. Though the county doesn't have to have that, the lightweight deflectometer or something. We don't have, that's one reason why we're engaging TerraCon to come in. They're only going to be there with that device part-time. It's not going to be a daily thing, probably just a couple of times a week. But they're anticipating their person is going to come out of Garden City.
Sure.
So they'll be here just part-time. But you asked about the, the overhead multiplier, the multiplier of 2.3.
Yeah.
So again, for transparency, we, we put our anticipator of all labor rates on here. That markup is for overhead costs, including any kind of operational costs. Employee insurance, unemployment insurance, just operating our business, pay the rent on our buildings, utilities, all that gets put into an overhead calculation and then it does include some percentage for profit as well. And that's our, that's our standard markup for, for county and city jobs. My concern to show the county, other contracts we've done with certain counties would be Gray County, Mead County. People have put up, I mean, ask, we used to say markup on all those counties. Nothing different here. It's just, it's a big project.
Yeah.
Really what it boils down to. All the cost for budgets, you know, we put these projects together. Like I said, if the contractor gets done in less than 80 days, we'll end the run and then as a county, we'll get, we'll not have to expend those funds. This is, as I've pointed out, this is to have also three people on the job doing inspection work. Their certified trained inspections staff. Trained in use of equipment.
Are they going to be there for each of the 81 days then, all, all three of those guys, or?
There'll probably be times where there will be less than three people. If they're doing the reclamation, and so they get down to the end, all they're doing is a microcracking. And there may only be one person there for that because the main part of the reclamation is done at that point. When they get done with the asphalt painting, or when they start the asphalt painting, we would have three people on site. One person up there with the trucks that delivering the asphalt to take the weight tickets and keep track of the yields. We would keep one person at the paver watching the paving operations. And then we'll have one person in the plant site running tests on the aggregates as they're coming out of the plant. Once they get down to the end, the asphalt, we'll have one person there to finish up the final walkthrough and see that they get the thing done.
All right, yeah. Certainly am not wanting to disparage anybody for trying to make a profit at their business. I try it every day and it seems like I fail a lot, but, you know. But anyway, when I shared Commissioner Boyes' concern about almost a quarter of a million dollars here as well, I mean, that's, and I know that, that we talked about a good portion of this, but this is a little bit higher than, than what our estimate was. Is that correct?
Yeah, when I compared the previous, my original estimate, I think it was about $207,000. And we have the numbers here based on the actual number of working days. I think it'll be a little bit higher. So time and materials, though, we'll see what it shakes out when we're, when we're done.
John, when you, and I don't want to nitpick this, but I mean, when you, when you think about like your, your team, and you know, you're thinking lunch at 19 bucks a meal and supper at 28 bucks a meal, hotels 106, we're still paying for breakfast, hotels have breakfast. I mean, are you, this, it almost seems like a standard, throw it out there, this is what we have, and then?
Yes, actually, the $55, which is the, if you add the three meals together, that is the federal IRS rate per diem. Typically, and typically if the hotels are providing breakfast, we actually deduct that off the bill. Our guy that's on the job, he just started his job on Highway 50 by the Chalpe Center.
Right, yeah, I've seen that.
He said, hotel, we're staying out by the casino. They're not providing really breakfast because of COVID restrictions, so. But that is, that is the standard federal allowable rate for, for per diem right now. The hotel, we actually build actual rate, the 105 or whatever it was in here, that's an estimated number. So we build actual rate, no markups.
So when you got a guy staying at the hotel, are you still billing the mileage from Ellsworth to here?
We build the, so that's, Ellsworth is his point of origin. We build the mileage to get here and then actual mileage to get to the job site, drive on the job.
The 10 or so, whatever.
Yeah, 10, 20 miles a day, whatever that must be. So we'll build the actual mileage and it'll all be accounted for on the invoices.
Yeah. How much the overtime, do you really think you're going to put in? I mean, when you budget 202 hours of overtime just right off the bat? I mean, are you thinking you're using all that?
Very likely. Contractors, when they get summertime, they usually work from the third of the morning until as late as they can. We're budgeting an average two hours per day. I actually would have liked to budget to three hours a day, but I saw the cost running up higher and higher, so I cut it down to two and we'll do the best we can to get them home in those two hours if they don't have to be there. So they're just going to clean up and we'll send them back to the hotel. I know when I started my career at KDOT, I was, I was on the job. It was not unusual, back then they worked Saturdays almost every week.
Sure.
But unusual for me to work 70 hours a week. We had over Saturday at 14 hours a day. 78, 70 to 80 hours sometimes. Typically nowadays, they don't push their people that hard to work on Saturdays. It's pretty much Monday through Fridays. Unless they get a rain out, they're behind, they might work a Saturday, but they didn't put any time in there a week.
And how's, again, I'd say the same as what Commissioner Boyes did. I don't want to nitpick here. How is overtime billed out? Is that on, on a daily or is that on a weekly?
It's over 40 for the week is how we do it.
So if you're, if you're working 14 hours a day, you're not counting six hours of that as overtime. So if you're, if you're working fourteen hours a day, you're not counting six hours of that as overtime then?
Well.
Unless you get over your.
Right, once they hit the forty, so if they work sixteen hours a day for three days, and let's say they get rained out the last two days of the week, then we're not going to, we're not going to bill six or fourteen hours for five days because our guys want them going home and doing something else.
Right, okay.
The last two days. We don't like rainouts either, and it just messes up our, our business also. I'm concerned, we, we studied the numbers pretty hard because I knew the prices were getting up to what we'd estimated, and I don't like to come in higher. We could cut them down and, and we'd just, we'd just end up seeing what, what happens if we did. But I want to be there, I want to have our people there to test where it needs to be tested to see that, that they're getting the compaction that they did and it's either and the contractor's not going to know if we're not there testing it, what their compaction's going to be.
Well.
Certainly when we invested three ninety dollars into the project, I think we wanted to do the, the checks and balances that we can to see that it's meeting specifications.
Well, the thing is, is I know the project is absolutely needed and we got more of them on the list that are absolutely needed. You know, we've, we've got to move forward and the number that we originally talked about and, and, you know, we got a, what, a thirty thousand dollar difference here now, and I, I don't want to hold up a three million dollar project over thirty thousand dollars. But at the same time, at a quarter million dollars, I think Lawrence at least mentioning that.
I understand.
Feel that's a lot of money.
I agree completely, it is.
That said, I'd make a motion to approve the proposal for Kirk and Michael and Teracon to provide these services not to exceed two hundred thirty seven thousand nine hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy cents.
I second it.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion?
I think, I think if, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I think, I think we, as a commission, I think we're going to have to really start thinking about our engineering services for, you know, when it comes to dollars like this. And even with that two point three multiplier on there, when you're talking thirty-six becomes eighty-two and you add on the next hundred, I mean, it's it might be something that we just have to have, we just have to hire someone on staff and maybe find that direct person, or maybe find it to where it's a local agency that we're using here today for those next projects. These are big. I mean, we want those people to be in county, I would think. I mean, it's, John, and no offense, I mean, it's, I mean Kirk and Michael out of Ellsworth, there's just a multiplier every time and, and, you know, if we're looking at that through here, I mean, it'd be nice to have somebody that can do different projects for us, you know, not just maybe this, but more. I mean, that's, that's two forty on one project.
Now, that's a big advantage that the county has of hiring the firms, because no one person has the expertise to do everything.
Yeah.
And these multipliers are, I mean, it's going to be, engineering firms are going to have the same types of multipliers. I'm not aware of any other firm in Ford County that really does these services.
There isn't.
I'd like to have, I'd like to have a team here in Ford County doing it. We've been trying to build a team in Southwest Kansas and after five years, we're still a team of one located in Southwest Kansas. Those jobs are hard to fill.
I understand. I mean, it might just be something we have to, I mean, I, I don't want you to take offense to it if all of a sudden we're putting out hires, you know, to, to, to find that next person that maybe wants to move to Ford County and become an engineer here. I mean, that's you can think of us with different projects too, maybe that we're not leaning on you as much. I don't know.
No, if it's taken.
Yeah.
We could talk about offline at any time about
Yeah.
how many counties that have engineers that we still do most of our time in Ford.
Right.
It's because one person can't do it all.
Right.
Gentlemen, anything further? I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
A person you guys.
Next one, John. Or was that the last one?
Oh, my name's Dick, so the ITC, ready to screen this one, three here. So ITC, Eric Ivie's here as well.
Eric, turn around, please.
Eric's with ITC, I'm sure you guys know Eric, you're in love.
Never met him before.
You can go ahead and compliment that guy.
Yeah, for sure. So I've been here several times, talking about the saddle substation project. We got the conditional use permit approved. As you can see back there, we got the building permit approved. The last thing we needed to do was the haul route, come to an agreement on the terms. And some other things we've been discussing the last couple of weeks. So we met last week here in Dodge City and discussed the road maintenance agreement. ITC presented what we were comfortable with after John made some changes to the original one. The county attorney was there, we went line item by line item and agreed and disagreed and what you see there is what we all came to an agreement at that meeting. It's an ITC legal, signed off on it, and the county attorney, he can speak up, he signed off on as well. So the road maintenance agreement you see there, if you guys approve it, then we're good to go with that. Couple of things that we discussed at that meeting as far as road evaluations and the road maintenance. The county, of course, is very concerned with saddle roads, a very high traffic road, paved road, very nice road, so. ITC definitely wants to be a good partner in the community and take care of roads. So we came to an agreement that Kirk and Michael will be evaluating the road a quarter mile in each direction from the substation. We had a discussion and, and agreed that that would probably be the most impact on the road right around the sub where we have our concrete trucks turning in and out on that road and putting pressure on, you know, when they turn there. So I think a quarter mile in each direction is pretty fair. We discussed road evaluation during a tire saddle road, which has been fourteen miles and we kind of came to an agreement. I see, ITC had an issue with figuring out who caused what damage, if there is damage on that road when it's a public road and a lot of other vehicular traffic is there. So I think that half mile right around saddle is, saddle substation is fair and as I said at that meeting, we kind of agreed to that. We also agreed to a bond of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that half mile that I'll be submitting to the county. That bond money is there to use if we do something to that road that we don't fix on our own or we don't come to an agreement as far as payment. If, if we've done two in a disagreement on something, the road maintenance agreement, we do have a third-party arbitrator that will settle the dispute with ITC and the county. We've been here so many years, so I don't think that'll ever happen. I kind of told John and Chris, you know, let's work fairly on both sides of it and, you know, if something comes up that's legitimate, we'll, we'll address it and fix it. In the past two weeks, we have a contractor now, it is MJ Electric, they've worked here several times on other projects. I submitted a timeline as follows the loads to Chris and John. As far as this, these two weeks, we're going to have a lot more heavy deliveries. They will be permitted. And during those times, we'll keep in real good contact with John and Chris, say, we're going to have a little extra load this week if you want to come out and, and take a look and make sure that we're doing everything right on that. Chris, do you have anything to, to comment on that or?
I think you covered pretty much everything.
Okay. Our concrete will come out of Dodge City. I guess the, one other thing is the driveway permit. There's already a drive there when we built the line. I don't know if we'll use that same drive because I, I don't know if that's going to, if the, I don't know if that's going to be specifications for our substation team to sign off on it. So I talked to Chris, if the best case scenario, we're just going to move that drive as far south as possible because one eighteen T is right there. So if we can move it south a little bit more, I think that would work best for the county or east, sorry, yeah. Move it east away from one one eighteen or one nineteen, whatever that is, T is there, one eighteen T is there. So we'll try to move it as south as, as possible.
East.
East. There you go, yeah, yeah, all right, east, yeah. So Kirk and Michael, as I said, will do the valuation on that half mile stretch of road. We're working on a, a couple of things to bill up. We were originally going to have Ford County be the contractor, bill us, and then you guys have Kirk and Michael as your contractor. Ford County's not set up in our Unifier system, so it takes a couple of weeks possibly to get them verified. So I kind of talked to JB and everybody offline. I'm going to see how long it takes to get Ford County set up and if not, Kirk and Michael's already set up in our system. So I'm going to find out if, if Ford County's going to take a couple of weeks, as we talked offline, we might just have Kirk and Michael do the work. But they would be working for you, not for ITC, which is how the payment would go. We're going to start next Monday as far as just pickup trucks, just kind of the supervision stuff coming out and getting the game plan further. And then heavy loads will start on the nineteenth, so we are kind of in a time crunch to get Kirk and Michael out there. John said he's already got a guy on site reviewing the wind farm, so it's, they're ready to go. It's just ITC might take a little bit longer to get all the paperwork done, so.
Kind of one thing that was interesting when we met, just even the, the process and how quickly this becomes a workable substation.
Yeah.
And where you said October, you can have it up in power.
Yeah, EG wants it in service by October, the end of October, so they can have their wind farm generate power, start making money. So that's, that's our timeline, that's our deadline. I don't see us not getting it, but, you know, rain days, you never know. That's, that's kind of a hard date at the end of October, getting a substation online. And, you know, the substation, so there will be taxes paid immediately on it as far as the tax base. It's a eleven-ish million dollar substation, so a pretty good tax base coming off saddle road out there. So as you can see, the road maintenance agreement is in front of you. The attachment is, shows the quarter mile stretch that Kirk and Michael's going to evaluate on that. And if you guys have any questions, I can answer them for you or otherwise, that's, that's kind of what presenting to you is, that road maintenance agreement and good approval.
You know, one of the things that we look at when we do road maintenance agreements, a lot of times with the wind, wind farms, is how heavy their loads are and how often those come.
Yeah.
And with your substation, we talked, there's less than probably ten heavy loads.
Yeah, there is.
It's a lot lighter movement.
So this isn't a major transmission substation, it's just the interconnect substation for the wind farm. So it is a lot smaller than, you know, the substation up, up your spearheads. It's like the one that's ironwood up in Spearholt, the smaller one that's to the south.
Everything's south.
There you go, south, south of the highway there. So yeah, I had another, oh, one more thing about wind farms, the difference between us and wind farms is anything that we pay to the county as far as road repairs or anything like that, we just bill it right back to the ratepayers with our cert, with, with our utility. So people in Ford County, you won't see it on the bill, but it just goes back to the Southwest Power Pool, you know, the entity of all the states that are joined in, that transmission organization. And wind farms, it's their bottom line, so that has to come right out of their pocket. They can't bill somebody for, you know, repairing roads that they don't see, that they didn't plan for. So that's the difference. And it's, we'll, we'll always be able to pay, you know, if we come to an agreement, but instead of wind farm, that, that comes right out of their bottom line.
Well, Eric, Ford County and ITC have enjoyed a several year-long relationship now. It's been, it's been good. We look forward to that continuing, so.
Appreciate it.
You too.
I would make a motion to approve the road maintenance agreement with ITC.
I second it.
Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Appreciate it. If you guys want to pass round one and sign it and have the clerk finish it, I'll take that.
Gentleman of number fours for Road and Restructure Chris O'Neill.
Good afternoon.
Good evening, Chris.
Hi, Chris. Before you today, I have the, our annual summer asphalt program bids. I will start off with the Coltnex asphalt bids. We received one bid from APAC Kansas here from, here in Dodge City. I asked for nine thousand tons this year and the price come in at seventy-two, seventy-two dollars and fifty-three cents for a total of six hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy. That is twenty, twenty-one cents cheaper than last year.
How much?
Twenty-one cents.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the bid and award it to APAC. Motion is second. Do we have any further discussion? Here you go, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next will be the emotional oil bids. And we split that up into three different options. Option A is Ford County will pick up at the plant, at a plant located in Ford County. And we got a bid from Ergon Asphalt Emotions there for a dollar eighty-five per gallon. And I'm asking to be picking up plus or minus a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons for a total of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. They also did option B, which is delivered to various job sites in Ford County from their plants. And that's for Ergon as well, at a dollar ninety-two per gallon, asking for fifty thousand gallons delivered for a total of ninety-six thousand. They did have a demerage charge of eighty dollars per hour, a free unloading time of two hours. And then the pump charge is a hundred dollars, but we have our own pumps, so we don't need that. So their combined total of those two is three hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Option C is for vendors that are outside of a fifty mile radius of Dodge City. And we received one bid on that option from Vance Brothers for two dollars and forty-five cents per gallon. That's a hundred and seventy-five thousand gallons total for a total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So my recommendation is for Ergon.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Ergon Asphalt Emotion at a amount of three twenty-seven, two hundred and fifty dollars.
I second that.
Motion is second. Do we hear any further discussion? Here you go, I'll call a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And finally, is the ceiling sand. This year I reduced our specs a little bit. We usually would ask for fifty-five percent of the material retained over a number eight three-quarter screen. After speaking to some of the local sand pits, that getting that material is a lot tougher than it has been. So I reduced it to forty-five percent on the number eight stream this year. So we received two bids. First one was from Hard Rock Sand and Gravel, at six dollars and fifty cents per ton for eight thousand tons for a total of fifty-two thousand dollars. And the other bid we got was from Huber Sand, at five dollars and sixty cents per ton. And total was forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars, and I'm recommending Hard Rock Sand and Gravel on that one.
Can you go a little bit more deeper into why we go with them?
Yes. So Huber Sand, the material is only available from their Garden City, Kansas pit.
Okay.
So I ran some numbers on that.
Meaning we'd have to go get it ourselves?
Yes, yes, that's, this, all these prices are with our trucks going to get it.
Okay.
So I started out by, from going from Dodge City to the various sites that we will stockpile of material. I used our, what we charge townships for the work that we do, if we use one of our trucks and belly dumps plus the driver. So all that time of the trucks being run, the drivers, it would be thirty thousand, thirty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars in extra cost for us just going from Dodge City to, that's just from Dodge City to the various sites that we stockpile at. To go from Garden City, to go to Garden City and bring it back to Dodge City, it's sixty thousand, six hundred and six dollars. So you add that plus then haul it to the sites, you're at ninety-one thousand dollars.
More.
Yeah. And that's, with eight thousand tons, that's three hundred and thirty-three loads with a probably two-hour round trip for each load. And if I had every truck running, that would be, that'd be nine trucks.
And that's almost seven hundred hours of having our people out on the road where they could be doing something else for a traffic too. So I really think there's way more value than just your ninety thousand that you're talking about by,
Yes.
by all of this other, for this other contract, so. I make a motion to approve the Hard Rock bid for ceiling sand. I'm sorry, what was the amount again?
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
Yes.
Fifty-two thousand dollars.
A second.
With the motion and second, do I hear any discussion?
Chris, I was just gonna ask, on these other three people that didn't bid, Clot Sand and Asphalt Paving, and then Ford Sand and Gravel, and then Crowell, are they, I assume Ford Sand is here, Clots, are they also local?
He has a local pit that he opened up down on Larry Way.
Okay.
I believe that at that time, that was only for, he was only gonna do that for Wind Farm.
Oh, okay.
But he did request that we would send him the bids, so we do that. Ford Sand and Gravel, I believe he's very busy with Wind Farm down with his Ashland Rock Pit.
Okay.
And Crowell, I, we sent it to him.
Who, who, no, where they?
They took over Dot City sand.
Okay. Alright. That's all, yeah?
Call a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris.
Next item is for Melissa Drake.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Hi, Melissa.
Hi, I'm here to notify you of vacancy I have on the zoning board, it happened to some boys to go. Lane, he goes by, he goes by Thompson, Joey, Lane had resigned. He was to be, he, his end of term was in June of twenty twenty-one, but he just had to resign just a little bit early. And that's all I'm here for, is just to let you know, and send them my way if you know somebody that wants to apply. I have the application to my office, and I will publicize this immediately.
Do we need a motion to accept?
I would make a motion to accept the resignation for Mr. Shelby, Tom Lane from his own.
Thank you.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Gentlemen, item number six will be for the sheriff as well, he's gonna cover for Chief Officer Boyd for requests for bids, and then sheriff will take his vehicle purchase on the next item.
You guys see what I'm presenting out here?
Read some notes.
I am. The chief is asking for permission to go out for bids for concrete slab to put his conex boxes on. He's looking for a seventy foot by one hundred foot, six inch thick slab for the training grounds. At this point, he's just looking for permission to go out for bids.
I think, did you say?
Seventy by one hundred.
Six.
I would make a motion to authorize Chief Boyd to go out for bids on concrete pad.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Next up, I'm asking for permission for the purchase of a Dodge Charger from Hyatt County Sheriff's Office. This popped up unexpectedly. We're in need of replacing some cars in the Civil Process Division. I've got funds available, so it will not affect the county's budget in any fashion, so. It's a twenty nineteen Dodge Charger, set up thirteen thousand miles. We'd go over and look at it, so basically a new car, it's just been sitting, so, but they offered it to us for twenty thousand dollars.
Still available?
I just checked before we came down.
Alright. I make a motion to approve the vehicle purchase from Hyatt County Sheriff's Car.
Motion and second, any further discussion? Call him right away.
Keep, keep finding. I brought a PO for Debbie to cut the checks.
All those in favor.
The timing on that would work out perfectly, usually it don't work out that nice to where we can come in and do this, so it's perfect.
On a meeting day.
So we're gonna, we're gonna do some vehicle moving around with this, one out of Thistle for Buck and Daddy. He may have a car, an admin vehicle to get rid of, so we may transition one of ours into his, so I'm not keeping an extra car. We'll make that work out, probably just stick, and just stick it along the way.
Next, three items are for HR Director Patty.
Good afternoon.
Hi, Pat.
Hey, okay, the first one is one of those bittersweet things. We have an employee that has had twenty-nine years of total service with, or in papers, twenty-two as a full-time employee of Ford County. Joey Banel in the appraiser's office has decided that it's time for her to do something else and retire. So she is asking for the early retirement incentive. She does meet all the criteria, years of service, age, and other qualifications. And I believe she's looking at July one?
Yes.
Yeah. For her retirement dates. So we just need approval, if you so wish, on this.
I would make a motion to approve the early retirement request as presented.
A second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? And no, 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 thank you for your dedication and service to Ford County.
I don't think she can, she's trying to stay under the radar, I think.
I couldn't tell if she was behind Hillary there.
She's made backwards.
Thank you, Stans. I'll call a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. The next one, we just, like Friday, I think, I received the renewal on our health plan coming up. The good news is that the first option as presented came in at a four point one percent increase. That's pretty good, cause most places are experiencing around twenty. So of course I don't ever want an increase. So I gave you some recommendations from the talk around that IMA had with Molly and I last week, just some basic recommendations. No decisions need to be made today, just wanted to answer some questions and put it out there. There's one piece of the program that will need signatures by the end of the month, and that is the drug copay maximization program. And that will be an addendum to the contract if we just, if we just, no, that's what I said, my name. If we decide to approve and move forward with the contract. And what it is, is specialty drugs, the ones that we have to get through prime therapeutics. They have changed the federal law, different things have, have changed that. So if we opt in, it would cost us a hundred and twenty-five dollars per fill for this program. But then any rebates, manufacturer's coupons, and any of that would be applied off of our costs. And not necessarily credited to one way or the other, to the copay, or would be part of the copay and co-insurance. Whereas now it's just a discount and they rebate eighty percent, something, something similar to that. The, I don't quite have my head around it completely, but IMA said, for example, one medication that, that we currently is being utilized here, even after paying the hundred and twenty-five dollars per fill, would save us four thousand dollars. Per fill.
Per fill.
Yeah. Yes, this one is a doozy. And so then they showed me the formulary list and said, you know, these are pretty common. So then obviously if you have another one of these, your savings would compound. So again, I don't have my head around it, so I'm not necessarily able to explain everything to you, but I did want to put it out there so that I could do some research and you guys at least had an overview of what our health plan was doing and what the, the recommendations were. We have, if you look at the one that says health and dental plans, renewal options as expected, this sheet, there's some options here. It was determined that our plan didn't meet mental health parity, and that's a federal requirement. And so the options to get us in compliance are the ones at the top. And we are recommending that telehealth be subject to deductible and co-insurance, where currently we had it at a zero due to the pandemic. So that was our recommendation, we felt, and I put it out to the benefit committee and I haven't gotten feedback, it's too soon, but IMA, Molly and I felt that this would be the one that would help the plan on the fiscal side, but also help the employees by still making that telehealth easily accessible for all of their services that they may want. We could do outpatient mental health and substance use and cover that at a hundred percent. Or we could change our eye and make our eye exams subject to deductible and co-insurance, which we have on the high deductible plan, but right now those are free. And my thought on that is we're really trying to promote wellness, and getting an eye exam is a, a big wellness piece. So I didn't, I didn't know if we would want to start charging if people were like, I haven't met my deductible, so I'm not gonna go get my eyes checked, or, or this and that, which could also have a safety impact. So those are the options, and like I said, our first talk around, option two, keeping telehealth, but having it subject to deductible and co-insurance was our, our recommended option. Then on the backside of that, it was recommended that we increase the single low deductible employee contribution by twenty-five dollars, just trying to get that equalized out, the differential in the planned cost, and keeping deductibles low, all the benefits in place, but having the employees that choose to have the low deductible kind of balancing a little bit more of that increase. So no decision, or, you know, absolutely no action today. I will need in the next meeting this month to ask if you do want to continue with Blue Cross, which is highly recommended. It's a really good benefit package and cost. And then if you want to do that contract on the maximization on the drug copay, understanding that that's only a specific, those really, really expensive medications. So, but I will, if you have any questions, things I need to research, I would love to jot those down so that I'm prepared for the next meeting accordingly. Okay, I should also have some data on the, the Tria Health Drug Management Program that we participated in this year. I should have some of that information. I can give you a summary overview of Care to Thrive and also New Directions, our Employee Assistance Program on utilization and things like that on the next meeting too. That brings me to the next topic of open enrollment, which is coming up fairly quickly. It has been expressed that the employees really do want to do in-person open enrollment. Last year, we did electronic only, of, of course, we put it together really quickly, but it was like on a scale of one to ten point five. It was just not great. So I think we're gonna kind of do a hybrid, but May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth are the dates. Danielle suggested that we host it at the Expo. We will have a lot of room for distancing if people aren't comfortable, and also expand the hours to better accommodate the night shift people. So we were kind of talking maybe seven thirty to six, seven thirty in the morning till six in the evening, those two days at the Expo. And people could meet with the reps if they wanted to, also have electronic options that are a little better thought out and planned for, for the people who aren't comfortable going in person. So I guess I'm just asking that, that maybe you guys set those dates and again state that this is a mandatory enrollment period to keep us in compliance with our cafeteria and the IRS, cafeteria one twenty-five plan and the IRS.
Are we gonna be, currently we're on an eighteen month cycle?
Nope, we're back to twelve.
Back to twelve, okay.
July one to June thirty is our benefit period now.
So you want this done June?
So we do May, I think we'll open the electronic options, is what I'm shooting for, is the whole month of May. And then the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, which is the Monday before Memorial Day, and people start getting busy with their summer, to just back clean up and meet with the reps and get, get the paperwork all done, so we can get it all implemented, cards can be issued if they need to for July one start.
Any of those dates consecutive?
Twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth is the ones that Danielle had clear and we thought kind of fit in the, in the schedule. They can obviously get ahold of me and or the reps if they change their mind somewhere in the process until the, the end date.
So I would make a motion to set May twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth at the Ford County Expo building as the open enrollment, in-person open enrollment.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, upcoming meetings we have are the Kansas Association of City and County Management Spring Conference, that will be April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, it's virtual. Then we have the Naco Annual Conference, July ninth through twelfth, that will be offered virtual and in-person, and will be in Prince George's County Marrow. We have the two executive sessions now, the, the information we have for the county administrator board.
Mr. Administrator, under upcoming meetings, I would like to propose that we consider for the commissioners having a, an expanded work session to discuss some, I've got, I've got a few, a few things that I've got in mind that I, that I would like the opportunity to be able to visit with the other two commissioners about. And I think Commissioner Boyd may have had one here earlier at the meeting that, that might fit into that as well. My suggestion would be that we start trying to find a date for that and, and then allow each of us to, to maybe participate in, in agenda. and then allow each of us to, uh, to maybe participate in, in agenda items for that work session, so that, uh, so that each of us have, if there's anything that we want to talk about, we, we have the opportunity to get that on there. I know I've got three or, three things at least, maybe four there, that I, that I wouldn't mind having the opportunity to, uh, to discuss with you guys in a work session, so.
Okay.
And we don't need to decide that date or anything right now, but, um, if I can have you start working, I'll put the date together that works for us, uh,
Okay.
and then we can start putting ideas back in there about agenda items, so.
Okay.
Uh, that brings us to, uh, the next item here is an executive session, and I would move that the board recess into executive session to discuss matters pending before the Board of Tax Appeals pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two. The open meeting to resume in this location.
Ten minutes.
Need ten. I'm gonna put it off to start until four-fifty, if that's all right. So we will resume in this location at five o'clock. In addition to county commissioners, we need county administrator, assistant county administrator, county counselor, county appraiser, county general, deputy county appraiser, Carolyn Petty, uh, to be included in the executive session.
I'll second that.
With the motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, everybody. We'll be back here at six.
Five.
All right, we are done with executive session number one, and, uh, we have another executive session on the agenda here. I would make a motion that the board recess into executive session to discuss contract negotiations pursuant to attorney-client privilege, exception to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, KSA seven-five dash four-three-one-nine-B-two. The open meeting to resi, to resume in this location at, is twenty, twenty minutes? You need some time?
No, I'll be fine.
We will resume, we will resume at five-twenty. Uh, in addition to county commissioners, county administrator, assistant county administrator, and, I'm sorry, we've got, my clock is off. Let's resume at five-twenty-five. Um, in, in addition to the county commissioners, the county administrator, assistant county administrator, and county counselor should be included in the executive session.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Executive session, uh, reconvening the meeting here. We had no action at this time.
Make a motion, Mr. Dr.
I second that.
I doubt there's any discussion, but I'll ask. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.